Good morning. It's Wednesday, July 19th, 2017. We're in the Senator Hearing Room, Cordell Square, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem, for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So again, good morning. Public comment is our first item, and nobody has taken this opportunity to talk to us. So if you're ready, our first item is a presentation from the Health Department, having to do with the Public Health Division's annual report. Pam Hutchinson and I assume Erin Walker, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Go ahead.
So I'm Pam Hutchinson, Public Health Division.
Will you pull that real close, Pam? I'm not hearing you well.
Is that good?
Yep.
Pam Hutchinson, Public Health Division Director for Marion County Health Department. Me is Erin Walker, the Public Health Epidemiologist.
Good morning.
So we're here today to talk a little bit about, or provide you with some information about what your Public Health Department is doing for the health and safety of Marion County residents, and to provide an update on the community health assessment, which we do every few years, and we do an annual update each year, which Erin's going to discuss. Public health operates largely behind the scenes, and we wanted to take this opportunity to let you know about the good work that the staff do over at the Health Department for the community. Normally, if everything's going well, people don't know about us. So this is an opportunity to share information with you in the public. So we have a vision for public health in Marion County, which you can see here, and this helps to guide our efforts. And to achieve the vision, we have identified priorities through a strategic planning process. To provide the state mandated services, which include things like investigation of communicable diseases, our environmental health work on inspecting restaurants and public pools and water systems, collecting and reporting health data for use in planning by us and others, and so on. We also work to maintain a competent and well-trained workforce to do all these services. We collaborate with community partners because we know that we're just one part of the health system in Marion County. We can't do it all by ourselves, and if we come together and work on an issue, we can have a greater collective impact. And then a good example of that is the prenatal work group, the prenatal care work group that we convene, that is focused on gaining early access for women in their pregnancy so they can have a better outcome at the end of the pregnancy for themselves and their baby. We also work to promote health and prevent disease, for example, by providing technical assistance to cities who are interested in implementing policy like, say, a smoke-free So once a year in the spring, we publish an annual report for the Public Health Division to describe the work that we've done, and this is posted on our website, which I'll provide that link at the end of this presentation. Some of the highlights in the report, we have several pieces of data here about the services that we provide, and this is not all of the work, of course, but it's a good representation. I've got an arrow there to the 94 food managers trained, and the significance of this is that training food managers in best practices for food handling correlates with prevention of foodborne illness. So we value that, and we put a lot of effort into it. In 2015, we trained more than half of the food managers that were trained in the state that year, and then we trained another 94 in this last year. Other things in the report are, on the right, you can see, of course, these health service counts, also health topic profiles. We usually put a couple representative profiles in the report. We do more than that, but the two that are included there this time are, is a report on mobile food units and the work around how, working with them to find them, to inspect them, and then it talks about, so what's happening in the county, what's important about this, and what are some things for the future. And we also have one on gonorrhea, because we're seeing increased rates of gonorrhea, not only in Marion County, but up and down the I-5 corridor and across the nation. It's quite a health issue right now. So we did a profile on that. There's also information about our performance management system, which is how we continuously work to monitor the work we do, create performance measures that we can measure and track, and then do quality improvement efforts to improve things that aren't meeting the mark. And then lastly, in the report, there's a short introduction to modernization of public health, which is a new thing that's been, being implemented through the legislature, and currently they are working on formatting rules that will tell us exactly the outcome. But basically, we are responsible to provide four foundational programs, which are communicable disease control, prevention and health promotion, environmental health, and assuring access to clinical preventive services. And this sounds pretty much like, I mean, it sounds similar to what we're already doing, but one of the changes is that modernization is moving public health more towards returning to its roots of population-based health, so serving the whole population, rather than a heavy focus on services to individuals in, say, a clinic setting. So we do provide, like, our sexually transmitted disease clinic, we provide immunizations, and what we've seen is with healthcare reform and people having increased access to insurance, there's less demand for those services, but we still provide safety net services for people who are uninsured. So the next part of this presentation, well, first of all, are there any questions about the report? Okay. The next part, then, is about the community health assessment, and I'll turn that over to Erin.
Sure. All right. So we just actually completed our Community Health Assessment Update, or CHA, this last June, and this assessment contains the most up-to-date demographic, socioeconomic, and health data for Marion County. We utilized the MAP process or mobilization for action through planning and partnerships to guide our CHA. Also, through the MAP process, the Steering Committee would determine that four priority areas for our CHIP, or our Community Health Improvement Plan, which are depression screening, timeliness of prenatal care, obesity prevention, and tobacco cessation. In addition, the selected priorities align with the priorities of Polk County as well, and the local coordinated care organization, Willamette Valley Community Health, WVCH. Also, what we've added this year is new health indicator symbols that call out whether or not an indicator was actually updated this year, and also if it connects to our CHIP. Also, we call out any new health indicators that are added with a gold star. Also, we've included any information for data related to the community coordinated care organization, and we've also added several new health indicators. You can find our complete community health assessment on the Marion County Health Department webpage. Okay, so I'd like to call your attention now to this handout. It looks like this, and it has some honeycombs on it. Basically, what this shows is key findings for Marion County related to health. Any honeycomb that has a green border is something that we actually do a little bit better than the rest of Oregon. Anything with a yellow border, we're about the same as Oregon, and anything with a red border, we're actually performing a little bit lower than Oregon. So for Marion County, a lower percentage of adults have actually completed high school. About 16% did not complete high school. Also, only about 30% of adults have a college degree, and the median household income is about $3,000 less than Oregon as well. Only about 62% of Marion County citizens are up to date on their colon cancer screening. About 30% of adults have high blood pressure, and 27% of adults have depression, and all of these are actually worse than the rest of Oregon. Also, about 10% of adults have diabetes, and again, worse than the rest of Oregon. 34% of adults are obese, and also 37% of teens are actually overweight or obese as well, and this is, again, worse than the rest of Oregon. About 17% of adults smoke cigarettes, and that's one thing that we actually do a little bit better than the rest of Oregon in. As far as sexually transmitted infections, we're doing about the same or a little bit worse than the rest of Oregon, except for with syphilis, when we're actually doing a little bit better. However, the syphilis rate has actually increased by about 805% in the last five years, which is quite staggering, really. But this is more of a global issue that we are seeing, not just locally, but in the state and nationally as well. Also, there's been an increase in the amount of teenagers that are utilizing marijuana since the legalization, and there's also a decrease in the perception of harm related to marijuana as well. Okay? And on the back of this sheet, actually going into the CHIP priority measures themselves that I mentioned, starting with depression, with the figure that you see here, Marion County is the dark blue bar, and the lighter blue bars are Oregon. And as you can see, that we have a slightly higher percent of individuals who have depression than the rest of Oregon. And this number has remained fairly stable in the years we've looked at, going back to about 2010. Next, for prenatal care, Marion County is doing a little bit worse than the rest of Oregon. We still haven't quite met the Healthy People 2020 target. However, we're doing better than the CCO, which is actually quite a bit lower than Marion County itself. Now, moving on to obesity. Obesity, Marion County, we have more individuals who are obese than the rest of Oregon, and we still haven't met the Healthy People 2020 target as well. Finally, for tobacco. Tobacco smoking has actually decreased slightly in the last few years. We are doing a little bit better in this regard than the rest of Oregon, but we haven't actually met the Healthy People 2020 target quite yet. Any questions about that?
Well, if I could start just a couple.
Sure.
I did a quick count. If I can do colors right, so it's like 14 compared to 2, well, we're better than worse in Oregon, so we're not doing well.
Correct.
There's just no other way to say it. And then a minor thing, the printing on this is hard to read, so I don't know if I got a bad copy or not, but before you pass it out, it's not really readable.
Thank you.
But thank you. And on those, I was going to say, on the worse than Oregon, I know a lot of things are out of your control and out of our control that you're measuring here, but it seems like such a wonderful place to live. How come? What's going on?
That's a good question.
Well, the first indicators that Erin was mentioning about income and education, those are considered social determinants of health that are directly related to health outcomes. If you have a good education, you can pay for health insurance, you know, you can afford to have a gym membership, or even maybe take the time to recreate, where if you're lower income, you're maybe you're working two jobs and not able to buy lots of vegetables and things that are perishable. It all contributes to health. Also, one of the challenges is the data always lags behind, so this data, this data that we're seeing today is actually more like the baseline data for when we started our CHIP.
That's true. So are you saying it could be better than that in reality today, or not? No, no?
I mean, that it doesn't really reflect any of the efforts that we've been doing. Yeah, it could be improving, but we can't tell yet.
Well, you'd hope it is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
No, I appreciate the question you just asked, because that's what I was thinking, and Pam's answer is so. In our economic development, we just look at those numbers, the income levels in Marion County versus counties to our north, and it's big gaps. And part of that, part of that is the type of industry that we have here, and trying to figure out how we can, what do I want to say, add value to our agricultural industry, which is so big, and then government, which is pretty stable. But it's just, we don't have those types of industries that drive that higher wage. We have some of them, but just those higher wages, and with that comes a better education and all those things. It's a challenge for us, I think. But I don't know. We're working on it.
Well, I think the other part of it is when we write, when I work on writing grants with our team, we always start out, mostly they're public safety grants. We have four prisons, the state hospital, two juvenile institutions, and the second-largest jail in the state of Oregon. And so I think there have been studies that have been, that's what I said already, yeah. So there have been studies that were done back in the, I think Jeff Davis did them back in the 80s or 90s, that actually looked at how having all of those institutions in our community then attracts families who have people in the institutions who then have higher social needs. I think the other piece is that we've built a lot of programs because of that, and people take advantage of those programs, and so they feel comfortable wanting to stay in Marion County to participate in those programs, mental health programs in particular. So, I mean, so all of those things, I think, contribute to the dynamic that you see, then you have, like you're talking about, lower-income families, and they don't have as much access to resource. But I have a number of questions that I wanted to ask.
Oh, yeah, please.
It's all right. So first of all, so I, when I go over to WVCH, which I do frequently, they have a copy of this glossy 2015 Community Health Improvement Plan. How does this information get updated in that information so that, and are they coming up with a new publication pretty soon, or what? Because that's, what, two years older now than what we have right here? So how's that working?
Actually, that is, when we convened the CHIP that included Marion, Polk, and the CCO in 2015, then we wrote the report, and CCO paid for printing it. So that's the booklet that you're seeing. We have not opted to put the investment into reprinting the booklet every year, but Marion and Polk both do an updated, update to their assessments.
Well, I think we need to think about that, because we're handing those out. I just handed one out yesterday. So we're handing out old information because we only have it on the web, and I'm sure that the CCO has resources for publication, if we can talk about that. So can we add that to our agenda? Because it's, I think it's a problem, if you're doing all of this work and nobody knows about it, right?
Right.
So as far as I knew, it hadn't been updated since 2015. And then I went online looking for information, because we're working on some grants right now, and found a report just from Marion County for, I think, last year, and then I was confused about, well, where's Polk County's? And so I think we're not thinking regionally on how we're putting this information together.
Well, we don't, yeah, we don't post Polk's on our website. The other challenge has been getting CCO data. Their data system has, it's getting easier to get it. They have more information that they can share with us, so that now Erin's including that in the report. So that's a strength, I guess, there.
So then where do you talk about this information with Polk County and the CCO?
Usually in the Community Advisory Council is where we talk about, but it's focused on the priorities for the CCO. That's what, you know, which are the same things, the depression screening, tobacco, early access to prenatal care, and obesity.
Okay. And who attends the Community Advisory Council for Marion County?
It's convened by, Patricia.
Well, no, I know who does it for the CCO. I'm talking about who's Marion County's representative.
Oh, it's me. We have one seat, yes.
Okay. And so you've been attending those meetings?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Yes, I attend. Katrina Rothenberger from Polk County attends.
Okay. All right, because I think that we're really looking at doing some work with the CAC and kind of elevating their presence with the board, and making sure that we are really looking at this data in terms of, you know, we're going to be moving towards doing more focus areas for the CCO, and I want to say updating our strategic plan, but then that sort of implies that we had a strategic plan in the first place, so revamping, I think, our strategic plan, it would be a better way to describe that. So we're moving towards doing that in October, so I think this is really timely for us to be able to bring this information forward. I just actually sent the board packet to Rob and Carla and Nancy as we were sitting here to find out kind of where they see this connecting with what we're doing as a region.
Okay, that's good. And I just returned from the NACO conference back in Pittsburgh, and went to several sessions on community health assessment and community health improvement, which is, you know, what we're trying to do as this region. And I'm bringing back some, I think we need to revisit our CHIP, our Community Health Improvement Plan, and so I was going to be bringing that up with our group.
Good. Okay, then the last question I had was, so what is our role in doing something about all this? So we, so we have a role in, as a public health authority, in making the community aware of what's going on and sort of the status of our community, and you've done that with developing the data. But then I think we also have responsibility, right, to try to move those social determinants, either collectively with the CCO or as a county, with our own county. So what are some of the strategies, just, I mean, the big ones that we're looking at that might move the dial on some of these indicators?
Well, part of it is driven by capacity, and what we've been focusing on with the resources we have is mostly collaboration. So we've got an obesity collaboration group. We have a group working on the prenatal care access. Depression has been slow to start, but I, our new prevention manager has some ideas, and she's working with Phil Blaia, I think you know him, to formulate a plan for that. And then, what's the last one?
We have depression screening, timeliness of prenatal care, obesity prevention, and tobacco cessation.
Tobacco, right. So we have a very strong tobacco prevention program, and they've been working, that's largely policy-driven, so it's working with local jurisdictions, and there's a lot of interest in that. We have some HEAL cities in Marion County, which is healthy eating, active living, meaning that they've implemented one or more policies. So that's very positive to see that kind of buy-in from around the community. Now, as with healthcare reform, I mean, healthcare reform, what's it called? Modernization of public health, you know, public health reform, I guess, there's a possibility at some point that as our, as the shift happens, more away from direct services and more to systems-based and, you know, looking at population-based work, that it will give us more bandwidth to do even more on this, because I think there's a lot of work to do, obviously, and I know that you've convened things on the reentry and homelessness, and that we've had Health Department reps there. Public health hasn't been as involved. We've been focused more on the collaborative things on, directly related to health.
Right. Yeah, that would be, that would be great, yeah, to get more of that cross-pollination with that, I think. And then when you're talking about these plans that you have for these different metrics, are these regional efforts that you're doing with the CCO, or are these health department efforts that we're doing with the county? Or a little of both?
Well, it's kind of a combination. For example, the prenatal group, we convene it, but both partners come in there, and so we're, we did focus groups with the CCO clients. They helped us, helped us investigate the problem further, and then Polk County is implementing the same kind of concepts over in their county. So we are getting that, we're trying to get the collective impact by agreeing on one priority, figuring out strategies, and then trying to repeat those strategies across the region.
Okay. Great.
I feel like a sound's going on with me.
And then I guess the last thing I would ask is, would it be possible for you, when you get those plans to a point, to come back to the board, say, in a work session, and brief us on what those strategies are, so that we're aware of that?
Yes, definitely. We have an annual report that we put out for the CHIP, too, that talks about the activities that have happened, and everybody reports in on what they've done and their successes.
Yeah. Might be useful for us to know, though, actually, what you're going to do, as opposed to reporting back on what you've done.
Sure.
So that, again, that we're, as a board, kind of on top of that.
Okay.
That'd be great.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you both.
All right, thank you.
Next, after our consent calendar, I don't know who it is.
I don't either.
Okay. Is it me? Let's do it.
You want it?
Yeah.
All right. So, Mr. Chair, appreciate the opportunity to do this consent calendar today. I'll move that we move the consent calendar. First on it is under the District Attorney's Office, approve amendment number one with the Oregon Department of Justice to add $43,885.01 to the Stop VAWA Formula Grant Program. Under Justice Court, approve an order appointing Todd C. McCann and Jad Limhouse as pro temp justice of the peace for Marion County Justice Court. Under Public Works, schedule a final consideration to adopt an administrative ordinance granting Zone Change Comprehensive Plan Amendment, ZCCP 17-001, sub- shabren for July 26, 2017.
I'll second the motion.
I've been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? I just have a little, I couldn't figure out what STOP-WA is. I'm not quite getting it, but something about violence against women.
Mm-hmm. Act.
Act. Not formula, like it says here, but anyway, that's what it is.
No, act. It's the Violence Against Women Act Formula Grant.
All right. Before that, any further discussion? Then, call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, we moved our action items, and I think there's five, six, and the first is under business services. We consider approval of a purchase order agreement with Northside Electric for $213,730 for replacement of the main electrical distribution panels at the Health Services Building. Colleen Kuntz-Chafin and someone, that I should know, but I don't.
Kevin Burton.
Aye, Kevin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Colleen Kuntz-Chafin's Business Services Director, and with me are Construction Project Coordinator, Kevin Burton. We're here this morning to talk to you about our electrical panel replacement at the Health Building. We went and did some searching. We found a state procurement on the cooperative website, State Procurement, where we did a power study that confirmed that our main service panels are outdated. We need to get them updated, as the breakers won't stay engaged. So Kevin and Tina, my contract specialist, went out and looked at various options to get this done, the sooner the better, and we came with Northside Electric. Kevin developed a scope of work that described basically as providing all the materials and labor, it's ensuring the materials are present, and the sizes and quantities that are needed to perform all work. There's a scheduled event of shutdowns that will happen for the health services, for the Health Building, as we're going through this process, because we don't want anybody to lose service while we're doing this. So bottom line is, the end of it will be done by December 31st. The first shutdown will occur in about a month, where we'll shut down the building on a Friday, and have some Saturday. We'll send out notifications that this is going to occur. The intended work and prep time, it also involves PGE coming to shut down some of the transformers that we have to do in that process. Am I correct? If you have any other questions about the specific scope of work, Kevin can answer that for you. So what we're here today is for your approval of the PO for $213,000. We have an additional $10,000 in there, you'll see on the Agenda Review Form, for the staff who have to basically walk through with the contractor, as well as PGE, because they know where the hookups are, they know where the issues are. So our staff will be with them at all times, present while they're doing this work. If you have any questions, Kevin can answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought this was going to be a lot bigger project than that.
We did as well.
We were talking a million dollars, I thought.
We were initially, and then when Kevin and the team went in to inspect, they decided that they didn't have to replace all three panels, that the panels themselves.
If I may?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, so they were looking at replacing all of the main panel, or all of the panels throughout the whole building. So you have a lot of sub-distribution panels throughout the building. Those are 200 amp-rated and lower, and those are, all of those parts are readily available, whereas the main switchgear, the high voltage stuff coming from PGE into all of those sub-panels is outdated, and those breakers are extremely expensive and very, very hard to get. So when one of those fails, the whole building is down for an extended period of time. By replacing those main panels with gear that we can get readily, that increases the safety and the productivity of the thing, of the whole building process. But none of the sub-panels are really that affected, and they're easy to bypass, should they create a problem later, and our staff, the facilities, electricians can actually change those out at a lot lower cost than subbing it someplace else.
Just to follow up, I mean. So, future, we may end up replacing some of those other panels, piece by piece, but this is going to get us to where we're operating efficiently.
Yes, yes. And those sub-panels, like I say, can be bypassed, so it's not going to disrupt the day-to-day work at the Health Building for an extended period of time, and they're very low-cost items versus the main switchgear.
Well, this is good news.
Those are on our preventive maintenance, so those will be ongoing in our deferred, so they'll come off our deferred, but put on preventive, so they're going ongoing in the future.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else?
Could you just say again, so when is the work going to be done? It's being done over a weekend? Is that what you were saying? So we'll have several weekends. So there's at least four weekends that we'll be doing it. So we start in August, then we'll do a Phase 2 shutdown in December, another Phase 2 shutdown probably a week later, and then the complete work will be finished by the end of December. It's really, so we, we're going to try to do something during, like, Veterans Day, and there is something wrong with that, as far as the, because these things have to be built. And so it's the building of them, they're going to come in and inspect in August, and then install them in December. So they're being built in process.
If I may. One of the other cost savings that we had was taking the existing switchgear box, so everybody's seen the electrical panel. Well, these are seven feet tall and three feet wide. And instead of trying to take that out of the building, we're taking the insides out of it, and we're actually having a insides out of it, and we're actually having a new panel inserted inside. So we have to do a main electrical shut-off to make the panels safe, so we can actually measure. And then, one of the manufacturers of electrical switchgear is going to build us a box that's going to fit inside our box, and all of our wires are going to hook up exactly where they used to. That saves refeeding costs, and a whole bunch of demo to the building to even get these things out and new switchgear brought in. So we pay more for equipment upfront, but it's a lot less labor and a lot less invasive to the, to the building. So we're going to have to do one main shut-off just to get the measuring done, and that'll happen on a Saturday. And then, we will switch the power off again, and that'll be the main switchgear in our maintenance shed, and that's where they'll actually install these new boxes, hook up all the wires. That'll happen on a Friday night. By Monday morning, we'll be up and running again. We'll have backup generators, handling emergency systems and all of that. And then, the third shutdown will be for the switchgear that's actually inside the Health Building.
All right. Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the purchase order agreement with Northside Electric for two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars for replacement of the main electrical distribution panels at the Health Services Building.
And I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase order with Northside Electric. Any further discussion? Hear none, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Being innovative and finding better ways. Next item's under Health, consider approval of a contract for services with Premier Office Technologies Incorporated for three-hundred-thousand dollars to provide medical transcription services. Scott Richards, I don't even know what it is for sure and why we need it, but tell us.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Scott Richards, Behavioral Health Division Director at the Health Department. So, the Health Department currently contracts with six psychiatric nurse practitioners and four psychiatrists to provide our psychiatric medical services for adult behavioral health, children's behavioral health, and the psychiatric crisis center. Those services, with most of those contractors, are documented by dictation. So, the psychiatrist or nurse practitioner sees someone at the Health Department and dictates their note onto a handheld device, and that, that dictation, at the end of the day, is collected with all of the individuals that are working that day, and submitted electronically to a transcription service that then creates a Word document that they send back to us that we enter into the medical record for each person. So, it helps our psychiatrists and nurse practitioners to be more efficient during the day, rather than keyboarding in their own individual notes as they go. Most of the medical prescribers that are working for us are using the transcription service. So, we've been doing this for about ten years via contract, I think. Prior to that, we did have our Health Department employees providing that service again. As I understand it, it just was hard to keep up with the volume and the timeliness required. It was deemed to be more efficient and cost-effective to contract out the services. So on June first, we issued a request for proposals for qualified vendors, and we received seven of those proposals. We looked in the RFP at things like staffing and their management plan, so what, how are they going to handle it if someone was out sick, or we had a stat request, which is usually within a couple hours that we'll get a response, we'll get dictation back, although unusual, there may be times that we, we have that need. We looked at their HIPAA policies and how they would safeguard our protected health information. We looked at quality measures and what their quality assurance practices were. Obviously, the standard is quite high. What seemed to be kind of the industry standard that popped out for me as I was reviewing these proposals was ninety-five percent accuracy, and most, if not all of the applications we have, met that standard. And also their technological capabilities. So I think we're looking at, one, we have an electronic health record system that is fairly dated, I guess I'd say. So we were looking at, I think, also, a provider that could handle our current way of doing business, but as we make improvements to our electronic health record system, will they be, have the capability to handle it differently in the future? So, of the seven vendors, Premier Office Technologies had the most, the highest rated application, and they have twenty-six years of transcription experience, including adult mental health work and healthcare systems, transcription services such as the VA Medical Center of Ohio. So, they're quite experienced. They're, also interesting to note, in transcription services, I kind of learned a lot in this process. It really, where they're located seems not to matter so much anymore. We had one newer vendor that was in the Portland area, but they had very little experience and one of the highest costs available. Everybody else was out of state. When we started this practice ten years ago, there was a local transcription services that, transcription service that we used. They actually were acquired some years back by a firm that's, I think, in the, the south, some Georgia or something like that, and, and most of our applications came from other states. So, it's a critical service to help the efficient practice of our nurse practitioners and psychiatrists. Any questions about, about the proposal, or proposed contract?
Just a couple.
Go ahead.
So, just to point out that this is a three-year contract, right?
Correct.
So it's three-hundred thousand over three years, so about a hundred thousand dollars a year. And, as you mentioned, it's in Ohio. So, just in case people are listening and concerned about it, so I'm imagi, so you were saying it could be anywhere in the world, practically, right? So, so when they do these recordings, there's an audio file that you can actually file transfer, is that right?
Yes.
And then they just email back?
Right.
But the security of that information, I'm sure that that's a concern because of the privacy laws. So how does that, is there a secure file transfer system that you use with them?
Yeah, and actually, as part of our RFP process, Jeremiah Elliott, our Senior Administrative Services Manager, who has some experience with this, was evaluating, do they have the necessary, necessary encryption technology that's HIPAA compliant and going to protect our files. Another thing that, that, in terms of the new technology, that was really fascinating, I thought, was that we take that and basically cut and paste it into our medical records, but the latest technology that some of the providers in this community and throughout Oregon have, allows transcriptionists to actually export that directly into the medical record.
Wow.
So that then the, the doctor can just look at the note, make any corrections, and be done with it, so.
Interesting.
All right. Ready for motion, please? Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the contract for services with Premier Office Technologies, Inc., for three-hundred thousand to provide medical transcription services.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the contract with Premier Office Technologies that we've just been discussing. Any further discussion?
Good.
All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
I know what it is now. Next item's under Public Works, consider approval of a resolution in the matter of declaring a state of emergency for repairs to River Road South. Brian Nicholas and Scott Norris, you're on here, be ready.
Good morning, Commissioners. I think Cam Berchley, our County Purchasing Manager, will join me here in just a moment. Let me pull this, pull a couple of slides up here to illustrate our conversation. So I will be, as I'll be talking about, item number three on the action item list, consideration for an emergency declaration for South River Road. This last winter, I'm sure we all remember, even though the weather is warm, last winter left some other memories for folks, a lot of snow and ice and, and wet weather this winter. And it culminated, the South River Road corridor, well, mobilized, all that snow and ice and rain mobilized the historic landslide on South River Road. And the aerial there gives you an idea of where that project is located. So this is a historic landslide that the county has been maintaining for decades, ever since the road was relocated to this position in the early nineteen thirties. So, in December, and January, and February, there's a series of snow and ice and rain events that resulted in damage to public infrastructure all over the state. In, in February, early February, Federal Highway Administration considered activating its emergency response program to make funds available to government agencies to respond to civil infrastructure damages. And in February, the Governor issued a state of emergency for several counties, including Marion County, establishing our eligibility for those emergency response funds. On South River Road, it culminated on February twenty-second with a rain event that, I'm going to skip ahead here, culminated with a rain event on February twenty-second that resulted in this landslide, mudslide that came down on top of South River Road. And in the preceding weeks before this event, we experienced a lot of sunken grade and pavement ruptures that you can see in some of these photographs here. In March, we submitted an application to ODOT Federal Highway for project funding to repair the roadway, and in late May, we received approval of a project application. Now, this is a emergency response program. Federal Highway expects local agencies to expedite repairs once the project is approved, and they expect local agencies to use their emergency contracting rules to make that happen. This particular funding, the funding that we've been approved for is approximately three-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars to repair a couple of different segments here indicated on the, on the map. And we've, we've visualized a project where we've added a little of our own county road funds to expand on the scope of that project. But I'll describe to you what Federal Highway has approved in this funding package. Scroll backwards a little bit here. This is an aerial view, close-up view of the first shot that we saw. This red line represents the limits of the project. So Salem is in this direction, Independence is in this direction, so we're fronting the Waimar River here on South River Road. And the damages really break out in the four different segments. At the very south end, we have a sunken grade, pavement rupture, and cars have to slow down about ten miles an hour to get over this safely. That's the condition that it's in right now. So we've done some patching, and that pavement has continued to open up. The second segment is here in the middle. And we sat down with Federal Highway and talked about the needs for this bit of roadway. You can see it's got a lot of washboarding, there's kind of like a roller coaster ride. They decided that, you know, this is more of a maintenance issue, that the county, in their, in their estimation, the county ought to handle this as a maintenance type of issue. They didn't agree to provide funding for that segment of rebuild. The third segment is about the north third of the landslide mass, and you can see what this pavement looks like. Sunken grade here, some heaving on this side. So this one is another good, what we do is you go up and over it with your vehicle. Cars have to slow down to about five miles an hour to get over this one safely. And when a car doesn't, you can see they go for a real ride. And there's one more segment, and that is that original mudslide mass that came down on the road. So, four different segments, cleaning this up. What we visualize is a project where we rebuild the pavement, and you can see some of the roadway geometry is a little extreme. You have to come up and over some humps, and it's a hazard to drivers. So, what we've, what we plan to do is lower these vertical curves, make the roadway a little flatter, easier to drive, safer to drive in, at a, at a more normal speed than this corridor is, is used to. Clean up this mudslide, put a rock buttress here to prevent the soft mass that tends to get saturated and move. Put a rock buttress in there and some stability measures up top. Segments one, three, and the landslide stabilization mass, that is, Federal Highway has agreed to fund those elements. And because these improvements at the end of this corridor are going to encourage people to increase their speed, we have set aside some road funds to reconstruct a small segment here in the middle third of the project, using county roadway funds. But that is, that's the project in a nutshell. Emergency response funding has two categories. The category we were approved for is emergency response. Those funds have a one-hundred-and-eighty-day expiration window. So, the nice thing, the advantage for the county here is, it is one-hundred percent reimbursement for construction, so we, we execute the scope of work that Federal Highway has approved. The opportunity for us is to get one-hundred percent reimbursement for those construction costs. The trade-off is, it has to be done within one-hundred-and-eighty days. Those funds expire one-hundred-and-eighty days after the qualifying event. For us, the qualifying event is this landslide right here, which happened on February twenty-second. That means our expiration for funding is August twenty-first, two thousand seventeen. So, a quick timeline to get this constructed. As I said, the state emergency declaration is still in place, and so we're still eligible for these funds. What we're looking for now is a declaration at the county level, so that we can invoke our emergency contracting provisions and go ahead and get the construction underway. Questions?
Mr. Chair, is Camber having anything to add?
Definitely.
Does Camber have anything to add to it?
She might on the next one, I think.
Oh.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cam Berchley. I'm the Contracts and Procurement Manager for Marion County. I was going to make some comments at the next edge of the item.
Okay. I just have one, one question. I know you make repairs here, but is anything that we're doing, lowering the buttresses you talk about, that really stop it from continuing in the future, or this just deals with what's happened to now?
Well, there are some advantages for us. Short answer is, it won't stabilize the entire, entire landslide mass. Let's scroll back here so we can see the aerial, I'll use the cursor for illustration, but the total landslide mass looks something like this.
Oh.
When you look at the topography, this is undulating.
It's not that little slide area, is it?
It's not, just as little slide, the railroad has to come in typically on a yearly basis and re-level the tracks because of landslide, landslide movement extends underneath the railroads. Property owners up here have experienced some settlement, and I know this homeowner recently had to install a new water connection to her well, because her house had moved enough on the foundation to sever that connection. So, it's something that, that all the property owners up slope here deal with. Our original application to Federal Highway was for almost two million dollars for a true landslide stabilization project that would stabilize this segment. That was more than their appetite there in terms of the project. There is a way of, there is a program that could be invoked to do that. However, because this is a pre-existing landslide that we've really been maintaining for decades, Federal Highway's determination was, well, you'll just need to continue to maintain this roadway the way you always have. The advantages for the county on this project, long-term advantages, are, first, we should be able, this mudslide here was driven by a seasonal spring, just up slope there. So we're going to put some permanent stabilization measures and this rock buttress. That should arrest that and prevent that from happening again. So that will be a benefit. Part of this, putting this rock buttress in, includes putting a drain system that carries water away from that slide mass. That's going to carry water away that also encourages the roadway to move. So we'll get a little bit of... So we'll get a little bit of benefit there. The primary benefit for us is rebuilding this roadway so that we kind of reset the clock and now we're able to just maintain this periodically. In the past, I believe we've overlaid this about every five to 10 years. That's when enough movement has occurred to require an overlay. It'll get us back onto that path, so it's a simple maintenance procedure. We're also reinforcing the base rock here under the road. So this, although we may see some settlement, it has to be leveled up over time. We shouldn't see this kind of pavement rupture where the road is really pulling apart and separating, causing those, you know, those large bumps that are hard to get over with your vehicle. So that was, that was about the best we could do in terms of securing the funding.
All right, anything else?
I just drove this road a week ago, Sunday. It was tough.
It's an exciting ride.
So needed, is what you're saying.
Oh yeah, I had to slow down.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, I would move approval of a resolution in the matter of declaring a state of emergency for repairs on River Road South.
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been seconded to approve the resolution declaring a state of emergency for repairs on River Road South. Anything else? Hear anything on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Our next item's related. Consider approval of a public improvement agreement with KNE excavating for $525,030 to repair a portion of River Road South. Brian and Camber, and again Scott, be ready.
Good morning Commissioners, again, my name is Camber Schlag. I'm the Contracts and Procurement Manager for the Finance Department, and I worked with Brian on creating this contract. So based on the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administration Inspection Report defining the method of work as an emergency, we then turn to our procurement rules. And since under Section 40-0150, emergency contracts, the board has accepted the declaration of emergency through a resolution. We then have the opportunity to review the situation and assess whether an emergency procurement is necessary. And in this case, we have, Public Works went through some methods of determining availability, capacity, experience, and capability, demonstrated experience, and demonstrated experience of successful completion, and therefore determines that KNE was the best fit for this. And therefore, through our procurement rules, we have established an emergency contract.
If you could, for me, some of the factors that go into saying that it's appropriate with this particular firm. Others, you looked at available equipment, any of those kind of things?
Well, we looked at road builders in our local area. Helpful to have a firm, we've got a good group of, you know, adequate supply of local contractors that can do the work. What tips the selection in KNE's favor is their experience working on ODOT projects, particularly design-build projects and other direct procurements that require open book negotiation and financial documentation. We're in a position where, at the end of the project, ODOT and Federal Highway will come in and they'll audit the project. KNE knows how to maintain their paperwork so that it's truly an open book and it's easy to audit. So that's a particular advantage to us because it reduces our risk of some element of work being declared non-participating and we'd have to bear the cost of that. So that's a particular advantage with their recent experience that KNE provides. They also have the equipment and the capacity right now to do this work, and that's another big factor given the project timeline.
All right, thank you.
Motion?
Whatever you think.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the public improvement agreement with KNE Excavating, Inc. for $525,030 to repair a portion of River Road South.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the public improvement agreement with KNE Excavating for River Road South. Anything else? Hear anything? Then all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, and get right after it.
Time's a ticket.
Our next two items are related. They, we consider approval of an ordinance amending the Marion County Mass Gathering Code by emergency procedure. Brandon Reich, when you're ready, Brandon?
Yes, good morning Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. Before you today are amendments to the Marion County Mass Gathering Code. These amendments create a new option for an event organizer that holds a small mass gathering to have a permit good for five years. The first year, the board would hold a public hearing and grant a permit good for the five years. Years two through five, the planning director would issue a renewal of the permit, subject to the same conditions of approval from the original hearing. Neighboring property owners would get notice of the event's renewal. And if the event organizer didn't meet conditions of approval, or there was substantiated enforcement issues, the planning director would send the renewal back to the board for a new public hearing to consider the permit's conditions of approval or to address code enforcement issues. Planning provided notice of these proposed amendments to the agencies the county coordinates with on mass gathering, such as the Marion County Health Department, Marion County Sheriff, and local fire districts. No comments were received back on the proposed amendments. Marion County has not issued any permits for large mass gatherings under our current code. Marion County has issued a number of permits for small mass gatherings, which are events of less than 3,000 people that last for fewer than 120 hours. Some of these events have occurred every year, and the event organizers have come to public hearings yearly. This amendment today would give those event organizers that hold repeat events a streamlined process. This year, two mass gathering permits have been issued for events that have been occurring on a yearly basis. However, these amendments cannot apply to them. We've looked into that to see if it were possible, and it's not possible to retroactively make this apply when they've already been through the public hearing and been approved. But next year, assuming the organizers apply for a five-year renewable permit, planning will notice the agencies the county coordinates with on that the applicants have requested a five-year permit. Neighboring property owners would receive notice of the five-year permit for the public hearing. And when the board holds a hearing, it would be able to grant a permit good for up to five years, with years two through five renewable by the planning director. With that, staff recommends the amendments be approved as provided. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brandon. This is, we've been talking about this, and this is great that it's coming forward. So just more of a technical question. There are several sections to this ordinance. So is the only change really the four-year renewal part? Were there any changes? Because I'm noticing section two says, different sections are amended to read. And there's the, when the application needs to be filed, and the name of the organizer, and what has to be included. Were those just included for ease of keeping everything in the same ordinance, or?
Correct.
Okay, so the, really the only change to the original ordinance is the fact that you can renew it for four years?
Yes. And the different components that needed to be added to the ordinance, the code to make that happen.
Right, okay.
Mr. Chair, for me, thank you, Brandon. Just a point of clarification as I'm reading this. So if I apply for the mass gathering for one year and everything goes right, I can ask for a four-year renewal? Or can I come in if I've never had a mass gathering permit and apply for a five-year permit? Because I know we had some problems here recently where we denied somebody. Can you talk about a situation like that?
Sure, and you'd be able to come in and ask for a five-year permit upfront. The board doesn't have to grant the full five years. The board may grant one year, the board may grant two years, or the full five years. If they have a track record like another property doing the event successfully and you feel like they'd be able to continue doing that, you could grant the five-year. If it's brand new, but it seems like they have a track record and they have their work together well, maybe you'd grant a two-year with one year renewing and see how that goes. And if it goes well, the next time they can come back in and ask for the full five. So the board has that kind of flexibility to approve anywhere from one to five years.
A follow-up, if I may, so, Mr. Chair. So we had a situation here where somebody was applying, and we, first time, I think, since I've been here, we actually denied it because of past problems. If that person had been awarded a five-year, would we ever be able to bring them back in?
Yes.
And, and cut it off?
After that first grant, at a public hearing of five years, the two, years two through four renewed through the planning director. And as a planning director would have evidence, the code enforcement issues, neighbor complaints that are substantiated. When they came in to renew, if they chose to renew after an event that had problems, the planning director would say, I cannot, cannot grant this, you're going back to the board for a hearing.
All right, good. Thank you.
Answer my own question, gee. Anyway, I don't have anything else.
Has that answered your own question?
He was having a conversation with himself in his mind, right?
And I lost.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, I would move that the chair read this ordinance by title only twice. Is that right?
Yeah, correct.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to have the chair read the mass gathering ordinance by title only twice. Any further discussion? Hear none, call a question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Now, if I was technical enough after answering my own questions.
Do you want to read it off mine?
I wanted to.
Can you read it?
All right, the first reading, this is ordinance amending chapter 9.25 of the Marion County Code and declaring an emergency. And a second time, an ordinance amending chapter 9.25 of the Marion County Code and declaring an emergency.
And Mr. Chair, I would move that the board approve the ordinance amending the Marion County Mass Gathering Code by emergency.
I'll second that motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance amending the Marion County Code by emergency. Anything else? Hear not all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. That motion passes. And the next item, or last item on our agenda then, is to deal with a fee. Brandon?
Correct.
Thank you. Good morning Commissioners, again, for the record, Brandon Reich, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. Before you today now is an order establishing a fee for a yearly renewal of a mass gathering permit. The amendments the board adopted to the mass gathering permit, mass gathering code, permit a five-year permit to be issued by the board. The first year with a public hearing, and years two through five renewable by a letter or decision from the planning director. The order before you sets a fee of $500 for the annual renewal of a small mass gathering permit. The fee for a small mass gathering permit, the one to five-year permit, would remain unchanged for the first year at $2,500. Staff recommends the fee be established as provided. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
It are there?
I do have a question. So currently, are they paying $2,500 each time they come?
Correct.
Yeah.
So this Renaissance fair, she's been paying $2,500 a year? So this would actually be a savings to them then, right? Because when she came back.
Be substantial.
Yes, it'd be just 500 for the next four years, so, okay, that's great.
I was thinking the same thing and following up on it. A lot more fair because it's really supposed to have something to do with the cost of looking into setting up and whatever. And if it's ongoing like that particular one has been, it can't take that much work. So this seems more than fair and will be very helpful, maybe even encouraging.
Mr. Chair? What about, I'm going to go back to our one example. What about that example where we denied somebody, so they goes to the planning director? They paid $2,500 their first year. They go to the planning director and the planning director denies it, now there's an appeal. It's still only $500?
It would be, it's all 500. And it wouldn't be an appeal, it'd just be the planning director would say, cannot renew this, either you stop or you're going to a board hearing. And it'd still be the $500 fee.
Okay. For the good players, this is a good deal, but for the bad players, this.
Is a good deal.
Yeah. Okay.
But I think the cost of going to the board for one hearing is not significant, right?
Yeah, overall, it's a good thing.
So you're looking at staff time, copies being made, that kind of thing.
Public notice.
Yeah, it's a little bit different than a land use proceeding where you have to go through quite a few more legal hurdles to do that. So I think it's probably, and then also, it may be a good deal for the person, but if they get denied, then they're cut off from doing it. So that's kind of its own reward.
So Mr. Chair, if you're ready for it, I'll move that we approve an order establishing a fee of $500 for small group gathering permit annual renewal.
Second?
So, okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the order establishes a $500 fee for small mass gathering permit annual renewal. Anything else, further discussion?
Just, just clarifying, this is a $2,000 reduction for people that are doing a good job.
Yeah, that's great.
All right. With that, I'll call a question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Brandon, for this and all your work related. Well, that is the end of our action items this morning. There are no public hearings, so the last thing to do is to read the places we'll be together in the coming week. I don't know why, it's a shorter list than normal. Today, at 4:00 to 7:00, North Willamette Research and Extension Center Community Open House at 15210 Northeast Miley Road in Aurora. Tomorrow, 8:00, that's on the Thursday, the 20th, City of Salem, Marion County meeting. That'll be held at the Sassy Onion, 1244 State Street in Salem. These are one of my good days. You start out with a breakfast, then you have lunch. But Thursday, 11:30 to 1:00, parole and probation appreciation barbecue, Marion County Transition Center, 3950 Almsel Highway, Northeast in Salem. Monday, 8:30 to 9:00, calendar review, Silverton Conference Room, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. That's followed immediately at 9:00 with management update, also in Silverton Conference Room. Then Monday, just after that, 11:00 to 12:00, Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officer Meeting. Executive session if needed pursuant to RS 1926602, and almost all the letters, A, B, D, F, H, and I. And that'll be in Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, the 25th, Community Corrections Board, that'll be at 8:30 in the Silverton Conference Room. And then Tuesday at 5:30, with Nell's Four Agency Event, 3691 River Crest Drive, North and Kaiser. And then next Wednesday at 9:00, a regular board session here in Senator Hearing Room, first floor, 555 Court Street. Now, Jan Fritz says we talk too much, so, do you have anything really important? Yeah, I'm just telling you what happened.
Well, let's keep talking then.
Right, yeah.
All right, make up something, is there?
Make her laugh.
Say hi, Jan. So, let's see.
Well, I can give you one.
We had the emergency management meeting last night that we all went to for the eclipse.
And it got done on time, early.
Early, yeah.
That was really special.
Yeah. I, I was impressed with all of, I mean, we've heard our sheriff's office talk about it, and our emergency management department talk about it. But to hear the Red Cross, the cities, the fire districts, I mean, that, you start understanding all the intricacies of how these agencies have to work together for something that they have no idea how many people are going to show up and what's going to happen while everybody's here. So that was pretty impressive to me.
I came away confident that people are trying, you know, thinking about it, thinking it through, and going to make the best of whatever happens. I feel pretty confident about that. So that was, that was well worth it. I do notice nobody from, well, the press especially was there to pass that information out to the public. But, so we'll do that now and just say, we think it'll be all right. How'd that do? Was that confident?
Yes.
All right.
It's, yeah, they, it's like they've been in the huddle for so long. I mean, you could hear the, you could hear the movement of the different people who would back up to other people based on, you know, situations. They're really trying to think through all the situations that possibly could happen. And it's just, you know, you do all that planning, and of course, the situation that happens you didn't plan for, but you've at least, you know.
I don't know quite, it says, Monday, we'll have management update. We should have a proposal to ask the board to fund some rather emergency or unusual items in terms of ambulance availability, perhaps towers. I'm sure we'll give it a good look, and most of it sound valid, but we didn't plan for it, but.
But just, just hearing the thought from, who's the lady from Lions?
Oh.
Sherry.
Sherry.
Sherry, you know, her, her description of having a, almost a mini first aid hospital thing to be able to deal with people up in the canyon, so you don't have to transport them and be able to release them. And then the other issue of. And then the other issue of having, the other issue of having, like vans or whatever to transport people, I mean, just thinking through all that stuff was pretty...
And thinking about going to different hospitals. If 22's jammed, then you'd need to go to Albany and Woodburn up to...
The one question I left and I forgot to ask was what about the, where are we with Lifelight, the National Guard, all those, you know, I'm sure they're involved in some coordination too, but it'd be really interesting to see where their staffing is for that weekend.
Well, and I had no idea an Amtrak train was going to be spread across a couple of roads.
Hand blocking, I think, yes.
Right, Sunnyview, I mean, that's kind of a well-traveled street. So it's going to be interesting.
I'm not going to be on Sunnyview then.
I know, but I mean, it's like it's the main thing to go from Lancaster to the State Fair, so...
It's interesting, because Raul Ramirez is in charge of the security at the State Fair, and he was there, he didn't know anything about it. And yet, these trains are going to show up right in front of the fairgrounds.
At the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
Great.
Well, that's why we meet, right? That's why we keep meeting. What does everybody know?
One that was kind of a new thought to me, and it kind of scares me thinking about it, I just drove back from the airport this morning, freeway traffic. And doesn't it just about have to stop? And then, doesn't that mean bad things? Or do you think people just drive?
Well, I think they're not encouraging people to pull over.
I don't think I want to be on it, I can tell you that.
No, I'm not going to be on the freeway that day.
It'll be weird, because, you know, lights are going to be on, it's going to be, it's going to gradually get dark, and then it'll be just like it was nighttime for a couple of minutes.
Like it's sunset, is what they said.
My wife asked this morning, so could anyone driving the freeway not know what was going on? And it's probably possible, you're coming up from California, like, what is this?
Absolutely. People from not around here have not, I mean, I think the people that are really interested in this stuff know about it, they'll come here, right? But there's going to be somebody just like, well, I got invited to a wedding on Saturday, and I go, I'm not, I'm going to get you your gift, I'm going to wish you best wishes, but I'm not traveling down the canyon or whatever. But there's going to be people that have planned a vacation to Seattle or wherever.
Yeah, just driving through, like, what?
They're going to, what's happened just now? They're going to, like, it's like Mars just, you know, Martians are coming to the Earth. So can you imagine somebody that doesn't know what's going on and they're driving through the Willamette Valley on August 21st at 10:00 in the morning? Wow.
Anything else?
Somebody had to make a movie.
I think we need to say hi to Jan again.
Yeah, okay, just...